Board, work session, all members present. Supervisor, Becky, you're presiding.
Presiding.
That's right.
That makes me the president.
That's right.
I have a personnel issue that I want to discuss with the town attorney.
It's not me.
Wait, 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 I'm gonna shut it off if I can figure out how. Thank you. I knew that.
When did this memo come? Murphy from Lake Avenue, Kappa.
Yesterday.
What time, do you know?
We left the office at three o'clock, so it probably came over at twenty-three and thirty.
Yeah, I never saw it. Do you have any litigation matters?
I have two questions.
Two questions, I don't have one. Okay. You wanna tell me what's in this memo? Because I didn't see it until now.
In that memo is just talking about the water main, the possibility of putting sewer through the village of St. James, just a phasing of the project which would be, you know, major.
Wait, I'm not so sure you understand.
It's the Lake Avenue project that David's here to give us a presentation on.
The one that you, somebody sent me this folder?
Yes. That Camp Planning Department, I've been working with David on it. Not just David, highway engineering.
Okay, so this Lake Avenue, this memo is relative to what you're going to discuss here now?
Yes.
Okay, so while we're discussing, who, this is from you?
That's what, I worked with all the staff members on it, highway superintendent, engineer.
Who's gonna give the explanation?
Mr. Flynn would like to, and his staff would like to give a presentation to the town board on what we can possibly do if we all agree to do it. Go ahead, David, have a seat.
Don't I recall you having put some money into capital projects for St. James?
Well, I requested it. The board, I believe, puts it in.
Right.
But I did make a capital budget request earlier this year for $175,000 for beautification.
But I thought that was included in, we, the last capital, when we had the capital projects discussion, you had that in the, something about Main Street sidewalks, did you not?
Uh, Main Street sidewalks to the best, the only capital project that the planning department had for Main Street sidewalks was for Smithtown, money already budgeted from the county, but the town, since it's a capital expense, it was a capital project.
Were there not brick sidewalks for St. James?
Not, um, the request that I made, the recommendation I made, I think it was about a month ago, was for beautification on Lake Avenue.
That's what I saw it.
Right. That, that wasn't finalized with respect to brick or trees. It certainly included trees, but the, the idea was is that St. James could use beautification, and so I requested that.
So how does tie him with this thing?
Well, let me just give you a short history.
Sure, please.
Um, to the best of my knowledge, from my foxhole, is over the past year, I've noticed that St. James, Lake Avenue, had a lot of vacancies and was looking kind of worn out. And based on that, I made a recommendation in the capital budgeting process for beautification.
Right.
After we submitted the paperwork on that, I had heard that the town board had already allocated money, I believe in the previous year's budget, for paving Lake Avenue. And I also heard that there was money budgeted for pedestrian crossing warnings, so there were like three different efforts of doing something on Lake Avenue going independently. Then I got a call, phone call from Councilman McCarthy a few weeks ago suggesting to like, let's tie it all together and coordinate things and come up with a project that would really benefit where all aspects are on the same page.
Well, let me interrupt.
Sure.
When did this show of, uh, Lake Avenue or St. James beautification came up?
Right.
You suggested, and I met with St. James people, and you suggested that we would put trees.
Correct.
And I think you did say some sidewalk work.
Correct.
And that's what we were told. Now, this is a larger project, when, how did this evolve?
Well, my understanding is, is that the town board had already budgeted money for paving Lake Avenue, for paving it.
No, no, no.
There was money, and there was, it was, it was supposed to be Lake Avenue North, and the last minute Robert switched the road program to Lake Avenue South.
Oh, that we see, but that's not.
It's part of the road program.
When you use already budgeting, I have no knowledge of that.
Okay.
Okay.
The highway department receives an appropriation for paving.
Right.
My recollection says it was like 4.5 million, I don't remember exactly. So now, how do you come up with more paving?
Well, it's not more paving. I think it's fair to say that, and I don't want to put words in the highway superintendent's mouth, but I believe he's in agreement, came up with the same conclusion separately. Paving alone probably wouldn't be a wise use of money because the curbs and sidewalks were in such a poor state of repair that it'd be sort of a waste of money to just pave the road and leave all the decrepit sidewalks.
But let me go back, of course, I'm confused, I want you to know that. I've got all kinds of memos here that I have not read.
Right.
Because they didn't come up to late. Every year when we produce a budget, there's an allocation for paving, four million, five million, whatever it is. Now, what happened since that budget that we're now talking about paving Main Street and St. James?
Lake Avenue.
I can feel you, Mr. Supervisor. I met with planning department, their staff, engineering department, Robert, and this has been going on back since, you know, late December, early January, for the total disrepair of a downtown district. It's, every single, it's not a sidewalk that's not broken, a curb that's not broken, an apron that's not broken. And in other capital budget which we adopted, there were street trees. We were gonna put some street trees in, put some flashing lights, and throw some blacktop on it.
Correct.
It doesn't work. It's basically lipstick on a pig. So it's either you do the job completely right or don't do it at all. And that's where we're at today, and that's why David came up with multiple people, all of us, not, this wasn't done in a vacuum, and to come up with a presentation that will revitalize downtown St. James and make it a shining star of Long Island. And it's just a very good job to bring it back to historic character that's, nothing's been done in this district for eighty-five years. It's deplorable. It needs to be done. And it's a $2 million project, and it would be a wonderful project to actually revitalize. It would increase your tax base because people will start coming back into it. But you know something? It's like, if we're not willing to fix our own house, then shame on us.
Well, I'm not so sure, I mean, I just, look, what is this going to cost?
It's $2 million, capital expense, it's in capital, it's on for capital, addendum to the capital budget expenditures today.
See, I think it accomplishes three things.
Well, no, let me finish.
Sure.
It just includes this project in a capital budget, but it doesn't allocate money to do that.
It would be included into the 2017 capital budget plan, and then the highway superintendent would have to come and make an amendment to the road program to include this in his 2017 road program. And with the engineering department doing all the engineering work, I checked with Mr. Riley, he said that he can do all the engineering work, topographical grades, everything else, in-house to save going out to outside.
I agree, understand. But last week, or two weeks ago, with the controller, we put together a capital program.
Right.
Was this included in that?
Absolutely not.
It was not?
No.
So now you want to add another $2 million to the capital?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if it's out of place for me to say it, but I think it's money well spent. I think the pavement of the road needs to be done anyway.
Okay.
The curbs and sidewalks need to be done anyway. Parallel to that, the vacancy rate in St. James has increased in the past year or two. And in the past, when the highway department invested in a neighborhood like San Remo or the Pines, it typically motivates the adjacent property owners to upgrade their own businesses, or their own properties. So if history repeats itself, then the same thing would happen on Lake Avenue. So I think you're kind of killing three birds with one stone here.
If I could just step in as someone who has lived in St. James forever, all of my life, and I go to the different stores, and I might go to the King Cullen or the hairdresser or wherever, and I walk, because that's my walk and I have them, first of all, it's dangerous, the sidewalks are dangerous when you walk, if you don't look down and you fall, you're done. The utility poles are digging up the sidewalks and the businesses, and I know personally the businesses are distraught because the utility companies won't, although businesses are responsible for the sidewalks, the utility companies won't even answer their phone calls. So I have seen people trip, particularly in slippery weather. I've, I've gone to the businesses, I've gone to the King Cullens, to the nail places, to the shoemakers, and everybody's upset and distraught about a little town that seems to be forgotten. And by the way, I think something like this should be considered for the downtown Kings Park. I think, I think we have a responsibility to the public to start somewhere. The businesses of St. James are distraught, the people of St. James are distraught because it's been forgotten. I think if we can, and I know in the supervisor's words as well, I think once you start to think about beautifying a town, they've done it in Patch Oak, they've done it in Northport, they've done it in Babylon, they've done it in Huntington, and I think it's time for us to join, is it the 21st century are we at? The 21st century, and start with our little downtowns. Every place I go, I spent 12 years in the county, and everything you always heard was downtown revitalization. It's the shot in the arm for the little guy. The little stores are going out of business, the landlords are raising the rent, and there's no stores left in St. James. We need to make it, whether it's St. James, whether it's Kings Park, whether it's Smithtown, it is incumbent upon us as, as the town leaders to start to work in that direction. And David, thank you, and thank you for always caring about this town. It's not just St. James, but this is what I'm hearing every day, I'm getting calls. What's going on? I am fully in support of beautifying this town, fixing the sidewalks, making it, making it something you're proud of. And I'd like to do that with the other towns, too.
Well, see, but I am somewhat confused here. We had a meeting last, two weeks ago, on a capital budget. No one talked about this, other than, I recall David saying, doing some brickwork on sidewalks. So this is a whole new bargain here today.
Well, yes, and you're right Supervisor, but sometimes there's, there's amendments to the capital budget, and there's things that have to be thought out, and things are brought to our attention, and they're being brought to our attention every day, and David, you know that, you know that, I think we probably all know that. They're in trouble over there. Businesses are in trouble, the little towns in trouble. I mean, I remember years ago, you could go out, walk through the town, and you could go shopping there. God forbid we lose King Cullen.
Well, wait, wait, I think we're mixing apples and oranges here. Maybe there's a responsibility, I'm not suggesting any, I don't even know what this plan is, I'm not suggesting not to do it, but there's a responsibility upon the businesses also.
That is correct. I, I believe you're right about that, and it's the landlords that do have a lot of responsibility, but they seem to be MIA. They don't want to, businesses don't want to come into a town with sidewalks that, with, first of all, with, we have parking issues, we have a lot of issues. I think we have to make it attractive. That's our responsibility, downtown revitalization, I believe.
And so did, who, this plan, you came up with this plan with David?
No, no, it's not just David, it was all the departments. It was engineering, it was highway, it was planning department, it was all.
Traffic, that's right.
I don't want to give the impression that I'm opposed to what you're saying here, but you know, I see a memo that came 3:30 or 4:30 in the afternoon, when the highway superintendent. I didn't get it at 4:30, I wasn't here. I haven't even read it. So are we gonna discuss all this here this morning?
I think it'd be nice if David gave us this presentation he gave here for, and saying what he's willing to do for the $2 million, and then we can have all the discussion in the world, because it's important we discuss it.
But you know, you know, I don't, I don't want to spend a dollar that I don't need to spend.
I know that, believe me, I know that.
I get hit with this this morning.
We need to spend this.
And memos from highway superintendent that come on the day before the discussion, in the afternoon? Okay, well, go ahead, David, I'll follow.
Well, I told you a little bit about the genesis of the project. The objectives, I think, are basically threefold. One is to try to improve business in downtown St. James. The second thing is to try to, basically, not try to, but to restore the pavement, and then the third thing is to make it, pedestrian environment better, safer, more attractive. The, the method of doing it is to basically restore the, the street to the way when it was when it was built, but also to add some amenities. When it was rebuilt thoroughly in the 1930s during the Depression, they put in concrete curbs and gutters, they put in a nice crown on the road, they put in some drainage, sidewalks, street trees, the whole nine yards from Rich's Road to Woodlawn. And it served the, the hamlet quite well for a long time. For a whole slew of reasons, the vacancy rate in the business district has increased in the past few years. One of the reasons, not the only one, but one of the reasons is the state of repair of the sidewalks. I've walked all three business districts many times, the sidewalks in St. James would be rated the lowest in terms of walkability, in terms of smoothness and crookedness and things like that. So the, the approach is to try to bring it back to what it was and add some amenities that weren't put in originally. One would be, say, for example, brick strips between the curbs and sidewalks, where originally they put in either grass or concrete. Street trees were put in originally, the idea is to put some back, actually to put many back, and as most St. James residents know, that in the past month or so, the, the trees have been cropped severely by the utilities, probably LIPA or PSEG, to the point that the trees are, look like weeds. So the idea is to, to plant stuff back, but plant what they call wire-friendly trees, ones that don't grow so tall, at least where the wires are thickest. One of the other principles of this is not to reinvent the wheel. The, there's no recommendation on our part to widen or narrow the road, because that would be much more involved. It's very difficult to widen because there are places where some businesses are seven or eight feet from the back of the curb, you wouldn't want the sidewalk to get narrower. If you widen the road, you'd have to move the utility poles, and there are poles on both sides.
Okay, David, I don't, I guess what I'm trying to get at is we had ample time to discuss this stuff. We had a capital budget meeting two weeks ago.
Right.
No one talked about doing any of it.
It wasn't ready for it yet, it was still in preparation.
Okay.
And when I talked to the controller about to go over this, it was very close to being done, he said, if you're gonna do this as a part of a capital bond, he'd like to float all the bonds at the same time, so we don't have to pay multiple, pay multiple fees to multiple agencies to get the bond.
Sure.
And that's why we're here today, and it's a great program, and it's, it's up to us to make our house, put our, start putting our house in order, and start with St. James, and every year, every other year, move to a hamlet, to another hamlet, to another hamlet.
Who came up with the cost of the project?
Well.
All people, everybody.
We did, but we basically canvassed highway, engineering, traffic, for all of the component parts.
Okay.
The, but anyway, what I was saying is to not reinvent the wheel, to basically rebuild what's there. It's more efficient to do it that way. The, another important aspect of this is to try to bring the area back for pedestrians, most planning experts.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay.
I am for it.
Okay.
But it just seems to me that this thing was just plucked here, without any discussion, previous discussion.
Right.
As I said, or repeated, we had a capital budget.
Sure.
Two weeks ago, none of this came up.
I understand.
Again, I have to repeat, it wasn't ready for presentation at that point.
Okay.
I don't disagree with anything that Lynn said or Tom said, I agree to everything that you have said. But to just voice my opinion a little bit on this is that I, I wish I had a little more time to look into this, this plan. I have a friend that has a business in St. James, so I know where I park, and I know it's difficult, all those things you had mentioned in the list. I get most of my phone calls when it comes to grieving over the revitalization from the Smithtown and Kings Park area. So I'd like to know, with your evaluation of St. James being the, the most that should be done, did that just come from simply their sidewalks and, and branch out? Because I, I don't get phone calls that often from St. James. Wisconsin I do, Smithtown I do, and obviously a lot of Kings Park since they've been working on revitalization forever now, so.
Right. It was also the sidewalks and street trees, I'm sorry, it was also the pavement and street trees as well. As I, I think you know, Smithtown, the main street is a state highway, it's 25 and 25A, and we're in the process now of getting approval to redo the sidewalks on one block, and that, that was very difficult to get state approval, just to rebuild the sidewalk. Smithtown is a much bigger district, and the Village of the Branches on the south side, east of Lawrence Avenue, so there's a coordination effort involved there. But aside from the, the scale and the difficulty of getting approval to do things, the state of repair is better in Smithtown than St. James, and so is Kings Park. I walk Kings Park the most often, because I live there, but I've walked St. James pretty thoroughly in the past six months, and it was surprising to me how bad it was. The pavement of all streets in Kings Park are better. Old Dock Road, which is one of the approaches, was done about four years ago. Pulaski, which comes up from the other direction, was also done around the same year. Church Street, I believe, was done last year. Main Street, I'm trying to remember when the state did it, but the pavement's in a good state of repair there. The sidewalks are basically level and safe. The, it's, it has other problems, it has parking shortages, it has buildings that are, that are decrepit and so on.
Right.
But the physical infrastructure and the public right of way is pretty good.
Okay.
Let me get back. The highway department and other department, engineering, put the cost down here?
Yes.
Okay. And those are solid numbers?
Yes.
And there's a contingency number in there also, for overruns.
13 percent.
It's very wise of Robert to do that.
Well, so is the suggestion here they add $2 million to the capital plan?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna, are we bonding that money?
Capital.
Well, that will be bonded, if it was the capital program.
I know you said you had a couple ideas.
But I do have an idea. Listen, you know, we, we claim here in Smithtown we have the lowest debt of any town. Last week, we, two weeks ago, we approved, was it 7.5 or was it 4.5, I don't remember?
7.7 million.
It was a total capital, we're bonding less than that.
So now you want to put another $2 million on top of that, is that basically?
The total capital plan would.
Would be now $9 million?
Nine and change, yes. But that's not all bonded.
No, why is that?
Because we just, because we're taking some out of, out of fund balance, and we have federal grants coming in for part of it, so we're only bonding just about $3 million of that whole, $9, $7 million.
What fund balance?
The ones you had in the budget that you set up with the controller.
Oh, I see, the ones I set up for, for the, the water mains or whatever, sewers?
Well, the sewer one, that was, that wasn't part of, two weeks ago, capital.
So, but I do, I know, we have set aside, we all approved the budget.
Correct.
It was $2 million in a definite fund for, in case we needed money for sewers, and $2 million for.
Open space.
Open space. And the open space is working well, I think. Now, the $2 million for sewers seems to me, it's kind of moot now, $40 million is coming from the state government.
That's true.
For downtown. That was just, that money was included by me as a kind of a safeguarding case, there was an overrun, and we had to make a contribution. That doesn't seem to be the case anymore, because of the $40 million, it's $40 million.
It is $40, yes.
$40, a lot of money. So yes, I would suggest the board, if you want to do this project, you take $2 million from the allocation that's in the budget for.
Sewers.
Sewers.
That would be fantastic, instead of bonding, getting paying interest on it.
Yeah.
I applaud you for that idea, that's a great idea.
That's the way, I think she, well, I think that's the way it should be done.
And I, and I think we should do this with an eye towards the other downtowns, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying that we're spending money foolishly, because I know our supervisor's very cheap, and that's okay.
Conservative.
But, well, that's the word, conservative. However, you know, there's an expression, if you, if you don't take care of your equipment, it won't take care of you. In other words, if you, if you don't fix the roof on your house, you're going to have more damage.
Does a highway superintendent have any concerns?
I just want to finish my sense.
Okay.
I, I just feel as though we need to take care of our downtowns, it's for our, it's for our, whether it's Kings Park or Smithtown or St. James, it's incumbent upon us.
Well, you know, I don't disagree with that, but where is the responsibility of these so-called chambers in developing commerce? There hasn't been an improvement on Main Street other than that insurance building that used to be the old sector building.
And I think you're right, and I think once we start putting money into it and making it desirable, that's where the, maybe, hopefully, the landlords will do something.
So what is, Mr. Murphy, what are your objections? I, it's difficult for me to read you.
Like Lisa just mentioned, responsibilities of the superintendent of highways. With this project, it's a great project, it will help the village, help the township, but the question is, we move real quick on this capital, and there's some concerns about the water main, which we talked to the, Chris, Chris Newstad with St. James Water, and he feels it's all right, just I'm concerned with.
He was watching all night.
That the water main that's existing is fine, but if we are to rip that up, there's always concerns about construction and damage, as well as the utility undergrounds, we would like to. If you're gonna be doing that much construction from now until the end of the year, we would contact the utility companies to try to get the conduit underground.
We've already contacted them, and there's no response.
Yeah, so that's.
At all. Three times, no response, over the past ninety days.
That's what my memo is, just to, we'll, we'll get the ball rolling with that, with the contacts we use, because if, if from now until, you know, this money's bonded and we start construction, maybe we can get some of the utilities all up, or, or all of them under the ground. And another bullet on that was the.
Well, I mean, could you mind me into it? I am not opposed to spending the money, especially since we have it, in doing what you've got over there on it. However, he now is interjecting other costs that are not in the $2 million.
It's not, no, he's not injecting, he's saying, of course.
I'm just bringing it to the attention.
This attention that, in, in a, in a wonderful world, you know, he, Robert was just bringing it to our attention that, you know, it would be a wonderful world to change the water main. Well, the water main's only 40 years old. At the talk in the Christopher Newstad, our superintendent of water district, it has a lifespan of 80 to 100 years. He says at this point, you know, it would be foolish to change it, because.
You'll still be around.
Only half of its life expectancy.
And another bullet is the.
One second, Robert. It would also be wonderful to get PSEG to put the wires underground. We've asked three times, we've had no response three times, and personally, I don't see it happen. It would be wonderful to happen during the project, but we're gonna keep on asking, Mitchell's asking, Robert's asking, I've asked, and the planning department all asked, you know, but I don't, the closest thing you could probably get to underground, because it's very, very expensive for them to go underground, is probably going to get, maybe them to go to rear yard overhead, which wouldn't affect this project at all.
You write here in this last paragraph, "A project of this magnitude should be discussed with the business and school, businesses and schools, as well as the contract is scheduled." Now, come on, what, what does that mean?
All I'm saying is we just have to coordinate it, because we just can't. All I'm saying is we could just have to coordinate it because we just can't jump.
Well, we always will.
I'm just saying, I just wanted to let it know that we're, we're going to reach out to the businesses. I know there's.
But that's, but that's an automatic.
Mm-hmm.
Come on, Bob.
But I'm just letting, because, you know, if we're going to start this project, I'd like to give the businesses time so they understand what's coming. Uh, the schools, their, their schedules, because the schools open until June twenty-fourth.
Robert and I had discussed the school and, you know, wait, that north part wouldn't start until after school was out and try to get that northerly part, which is probably one of the easiest parts to do, done before the school year comes back in.
Hey, do you have any comments on this? So far, you're the only one left speaking.
Speak.
I certainly will tell you that I am in support of the project, but I will say, and I tend to concur with you. I, this only came to, for me, I only learned about this about two weeks ago. It was never discussed in any of the twenty-seven million dollar five-year capital plan. I tried to catch up as best I could, and frankly, I got a myriad of conflicting responses from department heads. Some say requirement contracts aren't the way to go here. I've been told you might have wanted to do an engineering drawing on the entire project and put it out to bid. That way you could affix penalties on the vendor. I know I've dealt with requirement contracts and it can be difficult, and I'm, and, and I want the board to know that. They have crews in other municipalities working if we're going to use that requirement contract. It's not as easy as it sounds. You just tell them, no, get over there and do it. It's just not that easy. And my fear is, in talking to Robert, uh, yesterday, we want to make sure, of course, that we don't have Lake Avenue closed down. We encounter problems or we can't get the vendor in there. And we've had, there's been multiple occasions where vendors, uh, haven't been able to respond. And to go to the, to another bidder is, um.
And that's why that.
Is, uh, at times very difficult to do, by law.
In that memo.
So my point is, I'd like to finish, supervisor please.
Sure.
I am in full support of this project, and I'm going to publicly state that. And I do agree with Councilman McCarthy and specifically Councilman Noah, that, yeah, we should, we should have been and we should be working on all of these downtowns. And this is maybe a starting point. My only objection is, when these things are thrown on my desk and I'm looking at this this morning, and I think, listening to the supervisor, he is too, and three and a half hours from now, you want me to sit up here and vote on spending two million dollars of the public's money? Not that I don't want to do it again, and I want to emphasize that, I just think it's a bad way to do business, to throw things on the table and force elected officials to go ahead and do this. I would have preferred, if this has been going on for months, I would have been preferred that every elected official sitting here was put into the loop. I mean, to have these conflicting statements by department heads, to me, quite frankly, is troubling. I hear, "Should be done this way." Well, why don't you say that? Well, I, I don't want to create waves. It's not about creating waves. It's about spending the taxpayers' money here. And I don't know, at this point, I'm trying to ascertain how we're gonna, what we're going to pay for this with. I called the controller to do my due diligence. He told me we're taking the two million dollars that were budgeted in the budget, presented to the public of this town for searing. And now.
Let me just say, he has no conversation with me. That's an amazing thing.
Well, I called the, I, I called because I asked the controller, is this, are we okay with adding this two million to the bond? It's just a simple question. And he said, "Yes, we have plenty room." And I said, "Okay, so we're going to vote on adding a two million dollars to the bonding." His answer to me was, "No, we're going to take the two million that we approved for searing in the budget, and we're going to pay for this project." I just think that's, it's wrong to do it in that manner. That's not right. We, we went before the public with a budget, an annual budget, and it was two million dollars. We told the voters in this town and the taxpayers that we're going to spend two million on open space, which has been asked of us many, many times. And we're going to spend, we're going to put two million aside for searing, so if the, if the twenty million comes out of the forty for Kings Park and we're required to spend a couple million for a pump station, the money is there. Now, without the public knowing, quite frankly, and I think it's unfair to the public, we're going to take that two million dollars under the darker night and pay for the project.
What would be under the darker night then?
Well, the, the public doesn't, they're, they're under the distinct impression that two million dollars was put in that budget for searing.
Yes, except, except I'm the one that put it in.
No, no, I, I, I understand that, and, and they're depending on that, so.
Except, no, no, wait, let me say this here. When I gave the budget message, I used that, that two million dollars was in the event that we would have to pick up some costs.
Correct.
Or match something over.
Correct.
But a big thing happened since then. The governor gave forty million to Kings Park and Smithtown, so that makes that, that obviates that.
But we still may be required to come up with some money. And then, and then the account is empty, so, look, I just want to finish by saying this. I support this project. It's a great starting point. I agree with Mr. Flynn that it's something necessary, and I applaud Mr. McCarthy for bringing it to the table. My objection is, there isn't much conversation. I learned about it two weeks ago, and for me personally, I like to do my due diligence. I would have liked to have some additional time to go through this and have all these points I brought out so that I know what I'm voting on. And I wasn't afforded that, that, uh, at the time. I've been running around for two days trying to catch up. And again, I have conflicting statements from different departments, so if, if that's the vote that we're going to use that money, I would support it as long as there's assurances that if in fact we have to come up with some funding as part of that sewer plant for Kings Park, that the town board agrees that that funding will be available somewhere or somehow.
Well, there's no doubt that will be.
Well, I'm on the town board and I agree to replace it if we have to, Ms. Noah.
Absolutely.
Ms. Nizarella?
Absolutely.
So you've got your insurance.
Okay, that's fine. But, and again, I just want to finish, and I will finish it. Anything of this magnitude, I believe, this should be done in a setting with the entire town board, not, not separate. Because it's very difficult for the department heads as well, because they have trepidation about getting back to us on what's going on, and, and that was proven to me this morning. Some people say Newstad has concerns, other people say no. So either way, it should be worked out, but I believe it should be worked out as an entire town board. That's, that's my opinion and that's my objection.
Did you take into account the possibility of a water district or a highway superintendent having concerns about this project?
Well, to the best, best that I could, um, we thought of underground utilities, sewer, um, water. I mean, I spoke with Robert in the past, and he seemed to be concerned about paving it without doing the edges. Without doing the edges.
What's edges?
The, the gutters and curves.
Concrete.
That it would be.
Revitalizing.
It would be wasteful to put pavement over, over bad concrete, so to speak.
If you don't agree on it, we could slip some blacktop on it and still have it decrepit downtown.
No, 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 no.
It's not the right way to do it.
And the only reason this memo came out is because this thing moved from zero to sixty in just a two or three week timeframe. And I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but you sent it on May fifth to me. I don't, I had little knowledge of this. I knew there was an effort to beautify downtown St. James.
But I was waiting for contractors to get back. I had Pacilico give me cost estimates of what the water main, because Chris, Chris wasn't sure. He was still waiting for H-two-M to give a, yeah, yeah, an estimate. And then Pacilico also, while we were discussing the, uh, the whole revitalization, was the sewer. He says, "Think about sewer. You're looking at Kings Park and Smithtown." He says, "What about, you know, St. James? You hate to do all this construction, and you now get sewer to come in in three or four years." You just hate to spend all the money.
Yeah, we've been waiting for this, you know?
I know.
Twelve years in the county, four years here, we're still talking sewers.
Unfortunately, sewers.
You are right, you, you are right, but, but that word is just, it's, it's like.
But to grow the, the downtown area with the health department and their criteria and the new Clean Water Act, I would think sewers would be a, it's going to be a priority.
I would think.
And I think it's a great project. We're moving in the right direction, and we can do, we can do, we can do a majority of this, I believe. But with that scheduling supervisor that you thought that was kind of hideous that I put that in there.
Where, where, where's that?
That was the last pa, the last bullet in there, scheduling with the contractor and, uh, the businesses. We have to make sure that the contractor, that we have.
That's obvious, Mark. That's obvious.
But now we're doubling his, his, uh, contract.
Listen, I'll echo Mr. Wehrheim. You send the memo on May fifth.
It's just because this thing went from last week to this week, and then I just got Pacilico yesterday morning to give me cost estimates, and I wanted to provide what the cost would be.
Could we walk off, if one, we duly agreeing that we want to do this project?
Mm-hmm.
And can we just make sure that every, all the, the things are in place that have to be done?
Well, I think we go over Robert's memo. I think we can maybe allay some of the fears right now, because I've got some estimates on all Robert's questions. First of all, I go with the superintendent of St. James Water District because it serves about thirty-eight hundred homes. You're looking at one point five million dollars to replace a main on a wish list that he would love to do if all things were good. We're replacing, we're repaving and completely redoing the opposite side of Lake Avenue from Woodlawn to Jericho completely, and no one entertained doing the water mains on the Suffolk County Water Authority at all. He says, "No, go ahead and pave your roads. We're not changing our water mains." It's just, it's actually older than this one. This particular main has a lifespan, according to our superintendent of highways, of eighty to one hundred years. He says here it's forty years of age at a cost of one point five million dollars. I personally, sitting on the Board of Water Commissioners, wouldn't saddle the St. James residents only because it's a district of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars additional money on their water bill. That's number one, Patrick. Hold on. Number two, utility relocations. We've already contacted, as per Robert's memo, PSENG. And again, to no avail. They're not cooperative. They haven't even got back to us, and it's cost prohibitive from the little bit I've talked to them. Three, sewers. I would love to put sewers. Great sewers. But in the past, it was real very simple to do. You will do a rear yard easements from all the facilities on both sides of Lake Avenue, and you can put a forced main behind all the buildings with a temporary easement if and when, you know, something happens, which I don't see happening anytime soon, but without disturbing that particular road. And Robert is correct. He will get, get together with all his people. He's already met with Laser, who is his contractor, and they're willing to put one or two additional crews specifically on this. So he did his due diligence, basically by talking to the concrete people and saying, "We need these additional crews, and you're going to be requested to do it as per your bid specs." And if he doesn't live up to his bid specs, we fire him and get somebody else.
Okay, but, but let me, I'm, it seems like I'm talking too much here. It does seem to me that Mr. Wehrheim is correct, that a project of this magnitude should have had a little more discussion, not just this morning.
Absolutely.
Okay? And, uh, I don't think anybody here was opposed, David, great idea about doing the beautification. I agree with everyone here. But it's pretty hard to come to a conclusion on a two million dollar project. Is that number fair? Is that a fixed number? Is it subject to much change?
Robert did a lot of research into that number.
Okay.
A ton of research into that number to make sure, it changed actually four times.
Engineering, planning, and highway.
All the different outside contractors. Mark met with the outside contractors. Mark pulled our performance bids up, you know, for every single one of the typical items, and it's a strong, good estimate. And engineering said they will be able to do, so we don't have to spend another half a million dollars for outside consulting companies. He will do, and he says he can do it very well, all the engineering for the project. And I, as, as of nine-thirty this morning, he says, "I can do this project. There's no reason to spend half a million dollars of taxpayers' money for outside consultants."
So that's in the, that, that's in the two million?
Yes. He says, "We can do it in-house. It does not have to go to the outside." Because when you go to the outside, you know what happens? Prevailing wage blows your whole project up by thirty-three percent.
Robert, have you talked to him?
Mark Riley. Mark Riley feels he can do it. He did send out for Geo Maps to do a topographic map, which is going to give you one-foot contours.
So the engineering, um, drawings that you would need, he's capable of doing that? You spoke to him about it?
He feels he's capable of doing it. Um, we just got to get it done in a timely fashion.
And he has the, that's my point. He's got the availability to do it?
He believes he does.
Okay.
Robert, let me ask you a question.
Well, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, but assuming he didn't have the ability, would there have been another cost to the project?
It could, yes.
Correct, okay.
Robert, those sidewalks, after we fix the sidewalks, how can we get through the utility companies? They don't seem to answer your call. The businesses are frustrated because of picking up sidewalks. Utilities don't call back. Will that?
We're going to reach out to the supervisors and.
I think it's imperative.
When we do the markouts, when we do start the construction, that will probably start the ball rolling, but will it be too late? We hope not.
I mean, how, what's their responsibility? They, they're, they're, they don't call back. I, I know one person that tripped over the utility, over, over, broke her hand.
They don't have any, on the, the Maple Avenue project, there were three or four utility poles in the center of the sidewalk. They poured, the vendor poured the concrete around it. They were there for almost two years.
Three poles right in the same spot?
In the center of the sidewalk.
From the same.
Their schedule, their schedule wouldn't relocate them, so the, the vendor poured the concrete around them and left the project.
And we do have the double pole ordinance that.
I thought we had a law of some, that you had to take that down.
So we are going to act on that.
And that law, it's actually, so Robert, I don't know if you're aware of that, that's your people, and that's a highway law, that you have to get to the utilities when there's a double pole, and it must be removed, I think, within thirty days. Otherwise, the utility will be fined.
I think that's a county law, too.
We passed it as a town code about eighteen months ago.
Yeah, it's a county law today.
And I, I met with the people and we went from, we did Lake Avenue, Verizon especially, and they cleaned up their mess tremendously from one thing to the other. We spent four hours walking every pole and driving every pole from twenty-five A all the way to Wisconsin on Smithtown Boulevard.
We're up to about a hundred and twenty, and we're putting a report together, and we're going to give it to the, the, you know, the agency that's the last, whoever has the last wire on a pole is responsible for pulling the pole out. So that's, that's what's going on right now with that.
I, I think this is important for downtown. It's going to be important for Kings Park. It's going, I mean, this is our town.
Okay.
I have two comments I think that might be useful. One is in terms of the, um, paying for it, is I think you should get the controller's advice as to which is better, to borrow money or to use other money?
No, I am, I know my answer.
Oh, okay.
I will vote against that.
Okay.
Not borrowing any more money. The money is sitting there, not being used.
Sure.
And I want to use that. That's me. I'm supposed to be the fiscal.
And the funny thing is, that's why I often think, why would anybody borrow if you don't have to?
Exactly.
But Don told me a couple of weeks ago, when the, when the interest rates are low, it's advantageous to borrow. When the interest rates are high, it's not.
It's like free money, they say.
Yeah.
It's a control.
And then the second thing is if the board, uh, does put this in the capital budget, uh, I assume the work doesn't start right away. You have to actually, um.
You have to amend the road program.
Yeah, you have to amend the road program. People have to gear up and, and schedule, like, okay, we're going to start here and do this and so on. It sounds like.
That's where I, all of you guys get paid high salaries to do all of us. We, all of that. We give you the okay and you do it. Look, like Mr. Wehrheim, I'm for the project. I'd like to pay the way I said, using the two million. Does somebody got a better idea? I'll listen to it.
If we have it, why borrow it? We've all just said that we're going to, we need that two million dollars back in the future.
Then you could borrow.
Then we'll borrow at that point, but why borrow if we have that money in sitting in excess capital right now?
Okay, so we've all agreed on this project?
Yes.
Yes.
We, we all agreed, Lisa? And any?
I support the project. I just feel like I have had, um, department heads come to me with, with their concern on it. I haven't had time to really have those conversations.
Nobody came to me either.
I, I, they have come to me. Um, so I've only learned about this a week ago. That's my biggest concern. This is a very large project, and I'm kind of feeling that I didn't even get to read through it.
Well, we certainly can think about giving everyone a week or two to think about this.
I would like to request at least two weeks where we can discuss it.
I would like to move ahead because this, this town is suffering.
Well, one week or two weeks if we make the town.
What you would do today is just you're amending your two thousand seventeen capital project. You're not signing a contract with the highway superintendent today. You're placing the money available to do that, so the contract can be drawn. By that time, either you vote yes or no on the road program contract, if you don't still like the project, and we don't do it. And we just leave St. James looking to wait us.
Have you talked to your vendors, your bid vendors?
We had a meeting, uh, last Thursday.
They're made aware that this is coming up, possibly?
They were waiting till after Tuesday's meeting to, uh, sit down again and, you know, tell us if.
And you think, David, that this project will spur those landlords, some, many absentee?
Not all of them, not all of them. But, like I said, if history repeats itself, there will be people investing in the properties.
And David's also done a very good job. I finished it. He's putting together all of the absentee buildings, and then we're going to start. I've already discussed this with five different local banks to get local, very cheap funding for revitalization of downtowns. The banks I have spoken with so far would love to be involved in revitalizing downtown. He says part of their community, they'd love to give low-interest loans to people helping with the facade renovations, and they'll have criteria and packages made up within the next ninety to one hundred and eighty days, they said, for the people.
So you'd be doing facade renovations on those existing buildings?
Well, we wouldn't.
No, no, not us. That's, the proposal would be to do that, unlike Kings Park. Kings Park has a visual layout plan.
Right.
Sitting on the board, so, um, if you're going to leave those buildings that way and do facade renovations, fine. Otherwise, this would be the last part of that puzzle if you're going to start reconstructing buildings there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, Eddie, just so you know, because I do walk the town, because I do go to the stores, I've watched at least two stores, here's what they say when their lease comes up, "We are not resigning, the landlord's raised the rent, don't do anything, we're not resigning, and here's the reason, there is no foot traffic in St. James." And so, you know where they move? Twenty-five A.
What?
And so, there goes another empty store that's not taken care of, that doesn't look good. It's, it's a little sad, and I, I think we have, we have a responsibility to a few downtowns here.
Well, maybe if that store owner did something to his building or his store, he would get business.
I think we're all part of the equation, and I think we have to lead the way to the community to fix our infrastructure that's eighty-five years aged and decrepit, and if we don't lead the way, then shame on us.
And our infrastructure being curbs and sidewalks?
Curbs, sidewalk, beautification, lighting, crosswalks, everything. It's about time that we step up to the plate, swing the bat, and make St. James Village and all the other villages-
And we go to the next town.
Exactly.
Fix that.
The light of Suffolk County, because we have the best budget in all towns of Suffolk County, we have the least debt of Suffolk County, we have the most, probably in Suffolk County, the most affluent people in Suffolk County, we have great residents in there looking for us to be the leaders that we're elected to do, to do this job correctly. And it's either we do it or we don't do it, if we don't do it, we move on, but it's shame on us if we don't do it.
But I think we've all agreed that we'll do it.
Mm-hmm. It's a wonderful thing.
Okay. Robert, send me the memo on time.
Yeah, I, like I said, I was just waiting for the contractors to get back with some cost estimates on the possibility of sewer and water.
Okay.
Because, you know, I don't wanna just propose something without having a backup of the cost.
And I have to say, Robert, David, Peter, yeah, can't remember your first name again?
Matt.
Matt, Allison, who on this, I was leaving out, I mean, of engineering department, every single one of this person, every person in these departments have just gone above and beyond the call of duty, you know? They stayed late, they worked late, you know, they weren't looking for compensation for working, they just wanna do what's right for the town. We've got a bunch of great people here pursuing this to try to get it done, to make us all proud of our community. Thank you, David.
I agree with that assessment, I would just recommend that in the future, perhaps they can notify the entire town board, all elected officials as they're going through the project.
Well, this-
And then we wouldn't have a situation like we have right now.
Well, this, the final plan came together on Thursday, actually Wednesday, but unfortunately, I asked you to go with me to the final plan, but you couldn't because you had a hearing that day.
I was doing interviews.
Yeah, that was unfortunate, and, um, but it was done Wednesday, and, um, everybody got packages on Friday, and it was moving fast, and if you didn't get it as happy and as fast as you'd like, I apologize, but it moved fast, and, um, it's a wonderful thing, and the end result is I moved a little too fast, again, I apologize, but fast is good.
There's no apology necessary. My point is, if these folks, and they are good folks, have been working on this for months, they should be briefing elected officials as they go along, and in that case, we don't run into this problem where we're presented with something at ten o'clock at a work session and expected to vote on a million-dollar project at two o'clock. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Well, I will say, Robert always comes to me, you always come to me with your thoughts and ideas, and, and what you do is say, "I'll do it, but here's the problems," and I, and I respect that, you always call me.
Really?
He does.
Well, he didn't call me.
Ah, sorry about that.
It's okay, I got his memo.
Yeah, you said you had, um, executive session personnel for the items?